This meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. In accordance with chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975, adequate notices this meeting has been provided. This meeting of September 15th, 2025, was published in the Corrigan News, Star Ledger, and placed on the borough's website in Bolton Porter Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glenn Zane.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Verne.
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would just like to ask for a moment of silence for a number of reasons. This past week and a half and even prior earlier this year, we've had some very disturbing things happen in our country. Obviously, we had the nine eleven memorials this past week. We had a young girl stabbed for nothing other than sitting on a train and killed. We had another school shooting in Colorado. Earlier this year, we had some Minnesota legislators shot, some killed. And just recently, we had a man named Charlie Kirk on a school campus exchanging ideas and thoughts, which is exactly where you're supposed to exchange thoughts and ideas, assassinated. It's very disturbing on a number of different levels. And I think the rhetoric on all levels needs to dial down. So I would ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Abstained.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Zane.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Abstained.
Okay, departmental reports and notices, we have none. We do have Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th. And I'm going to ask Sarah Perez, one of our stellar borough employees, to come on up and meet me at the microphone. So Hispanic Americans are the fastest growing population in this country, far exceeding, I think, a few years ago, it was at 50% was the makeup of the new growth in this country. Huge. I think at 23.8% nationally and 19.8% here in Somerville. Or it's flip-flopped, it's one of those. And the impact that Hispanic Americans are having on this country and this municipality is huge. We have Hispanic Americans in our police department, our fire department, our administrative offices. You've taken on a role where you are engaging not only in Hispanic American month, but in all cultures. And you've kind of taken a dive into embracing that in Borough Hall. And I noticed that, the council notices that, Mr. Sluka notices that, and I think it's wonderful. I think it's a good thing to celebrate in Borough Hall. And it makes it fun, makes it a great time. So it gives me great pleasure to present this on behalf of all of those that are affiliated with the borough, whether volunteers or employed or living. Whereas, in September 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was observed during the week, including September 15th and 16th. Further, National Hispanic Heritage Week was expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to become Hispanic Heritage Month, beginning on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, the Hispanic population of the United States is now 65.2 million, constituting 19.5% of the total population. And whereas, Hispanics in the United States can trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, and the Spanish-speaking nations of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. Whereas, there are approximately five million Latino-owned businesses in the United States that contribute more than $800 billion to the economy. And whereas, more than one million Hispanics are currently serving in or are veterans of our armed forces. And whereas, Hispanic Americans have made profound and positive impacts on our nation and our local community through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, public service, entrepreneurship, and cultural traditions. And whereas, the borough of Somerville continues to work toward becoming a more inclusive community wherein all people are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, state, country, and world. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Brian Gallagher, mayor of the borough of Somerville, state of New Jersey, join with the Somerville Borough Council to hereby proclaim from September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, just to be here with you guys and serve the community of Somerville. It's really an honor to be here and serve you guys as best as possible. And I'm here always to support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have committee reports. Mr. Conti.
Historic Advisory Committee meets this week in this building. And I'll have more to update after that. Have a nice weekend.
All right, Gina.
The Board of Health will meet Wednesday, 6:00 PM, on Warren Street, at the county building. The rescue squad met last week. They did honor two of their deceased members, recently deceased members, Roy Gunzleman and Jim Glenberry, who, they honored them with dedicating the new truck to them. So I was present for that event and their meeting. But they are, I don't have a full report, but that event did occur.
Okay, thank you. Glenn.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Environmental Commission met last week. Just a few quick things. So far, the total volunteer hours that have been put together for all the Environmental Commission activities is just over 1,000 hours. We're well ahead of what we were, where we were at this point last year. And there will be more chances for everyone to volunteer coming up for some fall projects, like maintaining the rain garden at Carroll Page Park. So check the environmental website, Facebook, and Instagram for all those details, and look out for some of those things to sign up for. Also, in early October, they'll be, the Environmental Commission will be implementing a native plant grant and a presentation and planting at Vandevere Elementary School, working with those kids, which is great. And we're spending a lot of time working on completing our Sustainable New Jersey Action items that highlight so many of the ways that Somerville contributes to a healthy and sustainable environment. And the Commission would like to thank the council for supporting that process, especially with various resolutions and things on our agenda to do so, as you'll see some later on. As well as our next meeting, which will be in just about a month, October 14th, 7:00 PM, right here at the Civic Center. So come on out.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa.
Thank you. So this past Thursday, Municipal Alliance Commission, Youth Services Commission met, and happy to say that Somerset County awarded Somerville Youth Services Commission its annual funding in the amount of $6,000. This grant will go toward funding Vanderbuck's intervention program, Be Good Positive Behavior Support Raffles at the middle school, and Girls on the Run. The Somerville Public Library has announced that September is library card signup month. So if you've been meaning to get a library card, if you just moved to Somerville and need a card, this is a month to do it. And the, excuse me, Somerville branch only has lobby access right now to pick up holds and return books, but hopefully in a couple of weeks, they'll be open for full service. And the Public Safety Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM. And if you have any concerns or questions, please come to the Civic Center and join us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday's Central Jersey Jazz Festival was a great success. Attendees enjoyed the beautiful weather, highlighted by the smooth sounds from John Fattis and the new Jen Quintet and others. The event edition of the Division Street Art and Music Extension was well-attended. We should have the detailed placer data on the unique visitors later this week. Further upcoming DSA events for October include the Haunted Historic Tours, which is October 18th, Halloween Spectacular is October 30th, and for more information, please see the DSA website, downtownsomerville.org. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Roger.
The Recreation Department Committee is hosting the senior luncheon, which is going to be on October 5th, from 12 to 2:00 PM. The resident is, sorry, the event is for residents of Somerville 55 and older. It's going to be held at the American Legion Post 12, that's 232 Union Avenue here in Somerville. The lunch is going to feature food from our local restaurants, and the Rec Department wants to hear your ideas on how to make 2026 more successful and accessible for our senior residents. So we hope to see you come out. Thank you.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Next up, we have two items for discussion, stormwater ordinance and a shade tree ordinance. And I was debating whether to let these two go forward first, or if I would give my comments first. And I'm actually going to give my comments first, because this is probably the largest overreach on a property owner in the borough of Somerville, put forth in my 25 years that I've been sitting up here. The state has come out with guidance on what to do with our stormwater ordinance and what to do with our shade tree ordinance. What is being proposed goes well above and well beyond anything that any of us would even contemplate. Now, before anybody starts saying Gallagher hates trees, because Larry and I had this conversation last week, I don't. I probably got one of the largest grants to plant trees in the borough years ago. Trees are great. My property is great. My ability to control my property is great. The ability for every residential property owner, every commercial property owner, to control their property is paramount. It's your property. I looked, I looked through these, they first came on my agenda, I shouldn't say my agenda, our agenda, as an introduction of an ordinance. And I go, whoa, 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 wait a second. Where did this come from? Environmental has been working on it. For six to eight months, I've been asking for a red line document. What are you changing? What is changing from the existing ordinance that we have? And what are you proposing to be put in? And what I can tell you of what I read, it will make your head spin. So what I am going to do is I'm going to ask Mr. Sluka to make sure that these are posted up on the borough website, all right? These are the two documents regarding shade tree and stormwater that are being proposed. Everybody thinks the DEP is difficult to deal with at times? This makes the DEP look like a charm. So there's a few issues here. I'm going to take up the tree ordinance first. So, and I just want to kind of run through a few items for folks, so they understand what's being proposed. Any person planning to remove any non-street tree with a diameter of four inches or more on their property, on your personal property, in your backyard, shall submit a tree removal application to the borough engineer. No tree shall be removed until the borough engineer, a licensed tree expert, or a certified arborist, has reviewed and approved the removal with consultation with the Somerville Environmental This, folks, is three and a half inches. It's my business card. A half inch more, you remove something out of your backyard or your front yard, guess what? You're in violation of a borough ordinance. It's madness. Now, I'm not done. Tree removal means to kill or to cause irreparable damage, excessive pruning, application of substances that are toxic, overmulching or improper mulching, improper grading or soil compaction, construction of a new sidewalk and/or driveways within five feet of a tree that leads to the decline or death. Now, if you comply with all that, and you want to plant a new tree, you have to plant a new tree. You have no choice but to plant a new tree. Not only do you, are you required to plant a new tree, they also tell you what trees you can plant. There's a list, that's it. That's what you get. And if you don't, well, you're in trouble. You're in trouble financially. It's another tax. The ordinance shall be enforced by the police department, the borough engineer, or DPW during the course of ordinary enforcement duties. That's madness. You think our police officers have time to be the tree patrol? That's crazy. They've got better things to do than have a neighbor call the police on another neighbor because that neighbor's cutting a tree down. That's insanity. It makes no sense. It just, I read through this, and my head shook more and more and more. It's almost like we're declaring war on the property owner and saying, you have to do what we say, not we, council, because this didn't come from the council. So this hasn't been vetted by the planning board. It hasn't been vetted by the borough engineer. It hasn't been vetted by the stormwater engineer for the borough. It hasn't been vetted by legal counsel, because there's items in here that are counter to land use law, where it gives, the Environmental Commission wants the authority over and above the planning board and zoning board. I just, I read this, and I'm in shock. You know, I just, I don't understand it. Now, what, the argument back will be, well, the state says we have to do it. No, the state, the state gave us a template that you could use, which I think some of this is, but you don't have to. Well, other municipalities do it. We're not other municipalities. We're Somerville. And I want to do what I want to do in my backyard. Stay out of my backyard. You don't belong there. You don't belong telling me what tree I can cut down. You don't belong telling me what tree I have to put up. You don't belong telling me the police are going to come to my backyard because I'm cutting a tree down because my neighbor called. That makes no sense. None. Fines? Yeah, you got fines in here, too. So if you don't plant the tree, if you're in violation, if it's a small tree, four inches, it's an $800 fine. If it's a little bit bigger tree, it's a $1,600 fine. Little bigger, 2,400, little bigger, 3,200. Folks, when I walk out of here and I start talking to neighbors about what this proposal is doing, it's going to hit the fan. This is not good policy. It's not good government, and it doesn't make for good neighbors. This is, this is, it's crazy. Now, you go to the stormwater ordinance, and I'll tell you, the reality is, the stormwater ordinance is beyond the capabilities of us. We need our engineers, our paid professionals, to tell us what is right and what is not right. My understanding is, we already have a stormwater ordinance in place that complies probably with almost all of the recommendations of the state, with a few tweaks. Well, that went out the window. This includes minor site plans. Most people don't understand what a minor site plan is. So if you want to put in, let's say, a 20 by 20 driveway, you now have to comply with stormwater regulations. What does that mean? You're going to have to store water on your property. We've been spending the last 40 years getting water off of people's properties because their basements get wet, they can't do it, and now we got to store it onsite. If you are over your impervious coverage, and you put something, if you, if you do a driveway, and your driveway is included in your impervious coverage calculation, well, guess what? If you go to improve that, the stormwater regs kick in. So a $5,000 project now requires about 10 grand in compliance fees. It's insanity. It makes no sense. We like the environment. Again, I'm going to say it for the record. People are going to say, well, Gallagher doesn't like water. He doesn't like stormwater retention. He does, whatever you want to say, you can say it. Go ahead. But I've got two and a half square miles of property owners, residential owners, commercial owners, who are going to look at this. You'll get a handful, absolutely you'll get a handful, that'll say, oh, no, this is great public policy. But what does it do to the homeowner? I don't know. Anybody up here read this and fully understand this? It's beyond us. We might have one, maybe two. But the reality is, it has to be vetted by our professionals. It cannot come to this table, either one of these, in this form. This is just, it's, it's unbelievable. Very rarely do I get torqued up. A lot of you probably remember the last time I got torqued up. I'm torqued up on this one. This is, you're making the property owner the property award of the Environmental Commission. And I'm not going to allow that. I'm not going to let it happen. You're trying to usurp the ability of the planning board, the zoning board, and the borough council. And I will use every tool at my disposal not to allow that to happen. Having said all that, all of this, for us to sit and listen, makes no sense. This needs to go to the planning board. It needs to be vetted by professionals. It needs to be vetted by our paid professionals, who can understand what is our existing ordinance, what is the state mandate we do, and then we decide if there's anything else we want to do, not throw everything in. We didn't get a red line document. Mr. Sluka had to, had to red line this document. And he's not sure if he got all of them. So my attitude, council, is, this gets deferred, it gets pushed off to the planning board for their review. Those are the professionals. It's a cross-section of this community that has experience in land use. It's what they do. It's what they've been doing for decades, and they're really, really good at it. So, council, I'm going to defer this discussion and refer this back to the planning board, because I cannot allow this to happen.
Well, this did not seem like a discussion at all, Brian, but a one-sided tyrant.
It was, it absolutely was.
And I, I think that it is completely insulting that you would not meet with a group prior to this public meeting to lambast their efforts of volunteer time and labor and research that is completely uncalled for. So whether it's legal, illegal, justified or unjustified, we all live by laws and laws change, but the way you just treated this Environmental Commission, who are volunteers, is unacceptable.
That's fine. So I will tell you, I have been asking for six or eight months, I think twice at this meeting, and twice at the planning board meeting for red line proofs of this. And the next thing I know, it's on the agenda as an introduction of an ordinance. No.
You have been promising a meeting with these people for months.
No.
And this law has been engaged for over a year by the state.
And we're here, we're talking about it. Can we continue the discussion?
No, I don't know that we can. We, there's, we don't know what's in here that is over and above what the state is requiring. It's vacuous. It's, it's as if, it's like, let's see what we can get. And, and I don't think that's a good way to go about policy. I think the policy that needs to be created is careful, it's considered, and there will be an opportunity for you to speak at some point, it's not right now. It's careful, it's considered, and it's mindful of every property owner in this borough. Every property owner.
I mean, I'd be curious to hear what our professionals do have to say on this. I would be, I agree, a little bit of an overreach to have the Environmental Commission be an authoritative body for enforcement of anything, or required for consultation, since they're not necessarily on the same, you know, of the same construct as, say, the planning board or the zoning board for certain things. I do certainly think that it's worthy of us to consider the implications of a changing environment and increased stormwater runoff, and the facts that trees and better management practices could certainly help our neighbors, ourselves, and the borough. But I don't disagree with you that I'd like to hear from our professionals as to which parts of this are copacetic from their point of view. But I do caution that I would, wouldn't want it to die on the vine there. We do have to come up with some solution, because there is, there are a lot of enormous trees that have come down recently that will have an impact on runoff. There has been quite a few runoff flooding events that could be mitigated by better practice of everybody's property management. And voluntarily, people haven't been taking up the banner of doing as much as they possibly could in order to help mitigate it for themselves and their neighbors. And so I think some thought and some time and some effort to review these and maybe polish them is worthwhile, but I don't think abandoning them by any means is, is good practice for us. So I don't disagree with any, all of your points. I do disagree certainly with some of them respectfully. But I think that it's worthwhile for us to continue this conversation sooner rather than later, because it is, you know, the next hurricane, could be next week, we don't know.
And it will. And I, Andrew, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you. It belongs in, in the arms of our land use board to determine what is appropriate based upon what the state is saying. This is your law, these are your statutes right now, this is what you have to comply with.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know that. We have no clue in here what this is. So, sir, you're going to have to wait, okay?
I'm an expert.
No, it doesn't matter. Sir, sir, it's okay. So, so at this point, I think it's wise for us to refer this to the planning board, allow them to take it up, and, and understand with our stormwater professionals, a stormwater engineer, a borough engineer, and our legal counsel, because there, again, there's things in here that, that
Sure.
Don't, don't work.
Could I just request, though, that after they do that, they come and sit here and help us answer the questions
Absolutely.
That we have and have the discussion ready?
Absolutely.
So I'd like to see the planner, our stormwater engineer, our attorney, sit down, walk us through what they found.
Without a doubt.
And we could have the Environmental Commission also give their input
That's proper policy.
As to what their goal is.
Yep.
And then together, as a group, we can all come to what makes the most sense for the borough, as opposed to taking anybody's point wholesale at this. Does that make sense? Okay.
All right.
I would add to that, that it would be extremely valuable to have a certified arborist as part of that, too. It is a different lens to look through things than planning board or even our engineer. There, I think we would get some valuable information from that, especially some more updated information that might help make this what it needs to do. Because what it's trying to do isn't trying to tell people what to do on their property, necessarily, Brian. It's really trying to put together a policy that will help replace our tree canopy as it goes. And I think you and I are agreement that that needs to happen.
We've had a
Maybe this isn't the best way for it to happen, but I think that it is a valuable thing for it to happen. And I would agree with Andrew that we can't just let that die. We have to figure out how we're going to move that forward.
Well, Glenn and I had a great conversation about trees a month, month and a half ago, two months ago. And we came to a consensus on, on, you know, goals. And we came to a consensus on, on, you know, goals. And, and so having the Planning Board vet this, having them understand the needs of the property owner, the needs of the environment, and balancing that with costs, all of that needs to be contained in that document. So let's move it forward, I agree, and let's get it to the Planning Board. All right? Good. Environmental Commission, I thank you for coming. I thank you for preparing. However, we are not presenting tonight, it is going to the Planning Board. And that's fine, you, you can disagree with it, but this is the governing body, and that's what we're doing. So, you know, there are, there are great people on the, on the Environmental Commission. You do great work. These documents are not it. That's, that's it. So you'll have plenty of time at the public portion of the meeting, which is actually, we're going right into it. So you can, you can then ask away or comment away on anything you, you would like to. So I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Counselor members.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay. Public portion is now open. Please step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to me.
My name is Chris Itiro. I just moved here, I think I live at 200 Parkview Place. I'm not on the Environmental Commission, but I work for an organization that helped produce the enhanced stormwater ordinance. I, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you are unilaterally shutting down a public comment.
Are you speaking on behalf of the organization you work for?
No.
Okay.
I'm an expert. I helped produce these types of documents. I could tell you exactly what's in it that is different from the mandatory minimum requirements that the DEP enforces. I can sell you what's in this document that would help bring us into compliance with updated rules because I believe our current ordinance is from 2021. I have a red lined copy, I can tell you exactly what the major improvements are. If, if this is a borough that wants to do the absolute bare minimum that the state tells us to, that's kind of sad. I don't know, that's kind of a sad reality, especially when we're at ground zero for flooding in the state. Manville, our immediate southern neighbors, saw flooding on this, up to the second and third floors of people's homes during Ida. People died not that long ago. I, I don't know, I, I can tell you exactly what's in this. I don't understand why you're pushing this when
You're welcome.
We could have a follow-up session after public discussion. We have the experts in the room. Why not both? I think that's my main question here. I would love to, you know, bring in experts, I would love to have people that I work with, colleagues that I work with. I could do this in my official capacity at work. I could tell you all about what's in this document. But yeah, this is very undemocratic. This is my first borough council session. I don't know, it's just very disappointing, I didn't expect this.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you have any rebuttals or?
Uh, this isn't a give and take. It's your opportunity to give comment, and you gave your comment, we understand. Thank you, thank you.
I'd be happy to take your card. I, I didn't catch your name in the beginning.
Yeah, Chris Itiro. So the Watershed Institute produced this document, New Jersey features where I work, they have a very similar document that was produced by experts that were contracted in the stormwater sector.
Thank you.
It's not just something that somebody brought up.
No, I, I understand, but, but your, your time, your time, sir, sir, your time is done. Thank you, thank you.
Is there a timer or a clock or anything?
Uh, there is a timer, yes.
I just assumed that when I walked away that you have something.
You, you, you gave your comments, you walked away, thank you.
I was called back out, but yeah, sure.
Sir.
Hi, I'm David DeVorn, I live at 71 Davenport. Mayor, this is my first meeting, and I saw two sides of you. I saw a, an editorial, and then I saw an analysis. The analysis seemed reasonable. Let's have smart people who are qualified to qualify the document. Your editorial was really based on ignorance. You never asked the question, why? Why are these provisions put in here? This is not, not an issue of environmental, this is an economic issue. If the town experiences floods, that's an economic issue. Who's paying for those floods? The use of trees and stormwater is an economic issue. So I was very disappointed that you had to lambast work when that was uncalled for, and you really just needed to go into the analysis side to say, this is too raw? We need to get other people to be looking at it who are smart. That's my comment.
Thank you, I appreciate those. Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening. Jeff Lamborn, 32 Lisa Terrace. Thanks for taking the time to actually put it on the agenda. As Councilman Stravick mentioned, it's been something that we've been trying to get on for a little while here. Apologize that a red line copy with very definitive changes for what the state minimum standards are and changes that we proposed on the commission didn't make it into your hands. So that's a miss on our part, we definitely understand that. I, I'd like to think that, you know, Somerville, in its own two and a half square miles that it is, can make a difference. To be honest, it needs to be a regional thing for a lot of these. The tree, the tree ordinance, I think, is something that we can really sink our teeth into for a handful of reasons. In, in part because what happens on your property is also the concern of your neighbors. As a community, that we can have this discussion without kind of blowing up in anything beyond just words is, it's nice. Learning how to talk about this and move it together, I think, is an essential approach for how we do things. Trees in particular are, what's listed in there, we are open to discussion on the commission for how best to work through it. I welcome the opportunity on, on the commission to talk through with the Planning Board and others. We, we don't, certainly don't intend to assert any responsibility or put ourselves at a pedestal above others. We are volunteers, as most everybody else here is, and, and it makes a difference to us. The, the portion that I want to mention in particular for the record and those that are listening is there are plenty of exclusions when it comes to the tree ordinance. If your trees are in, in bad health, if they are dying, if they are a hazard, these are things that are listed in there, and, and there's a couple others, those can be taken out. I mean, that's, that's simply what it is, and you don't have to wait for a member of the public to go through on some of these if it really is a critical thing. But these are, these are guidelines, I think, to begin with, to understand what it takes to replace a tree canopy that, as we try to squeeze more into the two and a half square miles that we have here, becomes a hard concept. I, I'd like, and with regards to the stormwater aspect, I, I do appreciate in particular that the Planning Board has included the Environmental Commission on the stormwater ordinance piece and, and the stormwater master plan section. We do intend to kind of go through what we think is the best practice and approach it on a regional aspect. Watersheds are an important way to view things, those floods don't really care what municipality you're in. These things are just stuff that just makes a lot of sense regionally. So we are, we are pushing the boundaries for what an Environmental Commission does in New Jersey. We don't disagree that some of the things that we're gonna, we propose are certainly head scratches in a lot of ways, but we do spend a lot of time on it. So Mayor, I do, I, I do take offense to the fact that we're not having a discussion on it tonight. And it's understood that it can be had again, so I
And it absolutely will. It will be had at the Planning Board first.
Okay. Thanks, we do appreciate that. I think that's everything that I wanted to say for it, but just an applause to my other commissioners and, and general public that understand this, the council members that have been part of the discussion. So this is certainly not something that hasn't been vetted by professionals, not necessarily us, but other people that have a vested interest in making sure what's good for the borough is, is best for the borough. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Rich O'Neill, 124 West Cliff Street, Somerville. When I read this thing, I was fit to be tied. You were calm compared to where I was. I drove the day of Nikita Khrushchev. This would be something he would write. It's, it's, it's offensive, so I'm glad you put the brakes on it. The only, as far as the flooding goes, I've worked the floods since 1970 in this town, and our water is courtesy of Bridgewater. It comes down Peters Brook, it comes down Ross Brook. We're not generating it, it's coming down. And then the river backs up and, and it comes the other direction. So we've gotta think this through. We're, we're more of a victim than a producer. The tree ordinance, the only thing in this thing I agree with is D4. A tree is causing obvious damage to structures such as buildings, foundations, and sidewalks. That makes sense. Most of those trees on Main Street are doing exactly that, so they should all be considered a hazard.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Other comments?
My name is Larry Cleveland, 34 Grant Avenue in Somerville. I'm on the Planning Board, and I'm on the Environmental Commission. And yes, we've had many, many discussions. And this is just a retort to what Rich said. We're not cutting down all the trees in the downtown.
No, we're not, you and I agreed on that.
Yeah, and we're gonna say it again because the proposal, again, to start over again. No, no, we're not doing that. There are ways to save the trees that need to be saved and replace the ones that need to be replaced. If we can come up with a plan that the DSA can sign on, Borough Council can sign on, we can have a plan. So if there's a tree that's got a problem, bad sidewalks, it's gotta be removed, there's tons of them, what's the plan to replace them? Clearcutting is not an answer. Potted trees is not an answer. It can never be the answer. People look at our downtown, and it's beautiful because of the trees. The street is cooler because of the trees. Clearcutting them will never see, we will never see the benefit of clearcutting of trees.
And I will say this again, for the record, there will be no clearcutting of trees because the only thing people will remember from your statements, Larry, we had this conversation on Wednesday.
That's all I need to remember. That's it. There's no clearcutting of trees. That's not the solution. There are many things we can do to take care of the trees that are in the downtown. If trees have to be replaced, there should be a plan to replace them. This all started way back when they cut down a tree in front of one of the restaurants in town. All of a sudden, a tree was gone. People flipped. Oh, we're gonna replace the tree. Tree's never been replaced. But their sidewalk cafe is all the way out to the parking heaters. So we have to do the right thing. The DSA has been taking out the tree grates, the fencing, and that's been better, but now that causes another issue. These things have to be worked on to prevent tripping hazards and things of that nature. And yes, some of the trees may have outlived their useful life, or they're dangerous. There's tons of other trees that nobody talks about that are way dangerous. Nobody even looks at them because they're not in front of a restaurant. But they're in front of an office building. I can show you, and you'll see what I mean. But, oh, it's in front of restaurants, oh, can't do anything. We have to work together and take it seriously. Going back to the Environmental Commission, we do our best. We are doing our best. We have provided the best red line information we can compared to old and new. We were told what we gave was enough, and then we're gonna do some comparisons. Okay, we need to work together, but it's probably not a good idea to slap the people on the Environmental Commission because we're doing the best we can. We're not tree hugging nut jobs, no matter what anybody says. We care about the trees, we care about the environment. Some of these things are very serious and very important. A little more respect for the workers that are doing the work. I'm just the liaison. I'm there, I go to meetings, I participate. These people doing all the heavy lifting. They do the hard work. And it's kind of insulting to just give them the backhand. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Jeff Kaiser, 23 Vander Veer Avenue, Somerville. I wish I had like 10 more minutes to like collect myself before I was gonna talk. I'm really disappointed, and I am offended. When Ida happened, it was, it was a big, it was, it was huge for the town. And then as a member of the Environmental Commission, I became very much interested in stormwater management and how to, how to approach it, how to make things better for our town. And so I started researching. I started attending webinars and learning about stormwater management. And then recognizing that back in 2024, we were supposed to have passed a bill that would put us into compliance under the new inland flood protection rule. This, this was, you know, this, the council, the, the, the government did, we didn't pass it, right? So I was like, okay, I'm gonna take a crack and try to provide a suggestion. Hey, here's, here's what we think, not what we wanna do or what we wanna dictate to the government body. We're volunteers, we're just here to help. And that's what I was trying to do. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you, you misunderstand this entire situation. You misunderstand what we're trying to do here, what we're trying, how we're trying to just help. And so I went through and I did my due diligence, I did my research. I, I talked with people from the Watershed Institute. I read their documents. I talked to experts. I compared the documents. And I have, and I was a main part of writing that ordinance, which is mainly, it's the, it's, it's the stock ordinance from this DEP, which is required by law to be passed. And so I was, I thought I was doing a cert, I help, I help, a service to the council. And I was excited to come and talk about it with you and discuss it, or just, or listen to your discussion about what you guys think about it. Now, I've had red line documents, I've had the other documents sent multiple times. I don't know what happened there, but the stormwater is so important. In, in 21, 2100, year 2100, this county is gonna have 48% more rainfall than we do today. And this enhanced stormwater ordinance is looking towards the future, planning towards the future. I know we have the master plan, we wanna plan 10 years, 15, 20 years down the road. This is what that would do. And so I was hoping that we could have, that, you know, we can make something of this and move forward. But if you didn't wanna listen to it, if you guys didn't wanna have the discussion, then, then why put it on the, on the agenda? So that's why, anyway, I could go on, but I, I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Helene Vanazellis, 8 Lori Drive. I am part of the Environmental Commission and have been for many years now. And I am deeply offended at your comments. There should have been a discussion with us beforehand. If you felt so strongly about this, why didn't you come to us and talk to us about it? Instead of making a public display of this, which is absolutely unfair to everybody on the Environmental Commission. That said, I want to go on to another topic, which is making the town more puppy friendly, dog friendly. I think that's a great idea. I think we have businesses that have been doing that, we're putting water bottles out and little trees for dogs, but now you have a suggestion to put artificial turf in undesigned areas? First of all, you took out grates around trees, which I understand we need to fix the areas there. But the grates were supposed to protect the trees from dogs and other things. Now, if the consideration is to put artificial turf in those areas, now you're going to affect the trees, you're gonna affect people walking who don't wanna see puppy poop, sitting at restaurants, eating, and because the dogs are gonna be attracted to that. So I think you really need to rethink this. And maybe putting stands that have plastic garbage bags would be more helpful. And I know people really would love a dog park, so maybe that would be a better solution. So I really think you need to rethink that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
So a couple of things. Thank you all for your comments. I do, I do take your comments to heart, I do. We have had discussions over the past year about this. I've had great discussions with I've had great discussions, um, with a number of folks about the trees. And, and where I thought, uh, residential property owners might be, you might find a spot. It never came to fruition. It never came to me. I find out on Thursday that there is an ordinance introduction on the agenda for these two items. It went from, straight from planning with no red line to an ordinance. That it, it's never been done before. That just doesn't happen. So, so, you know, stormwater is important. I agree with you. Absolutely agree with you. But so are the rights of property owners. Property owner, your property is your primary. That's yours. And we all need to be very careful about how we intrude on somebody's personal property. And that's why I react the way I do. Because I understand you're looking out for the, the stormwater, and you're trying to, I, I, I get that. I understand that. But I, this whole governing body has a responsibility to about thirteen thousand five hundred people, to about six thousand pieces of property. That's my job. And I have to balance all of those different needs. Am I gonna make everybody happy? Absolutely not. But what I can tell you is, having sat up here for twenty years, I think I've walked a fine balance of trying to make people understand. If I can't make them happy, I help them understand why. And they may not agree with it, but they understand it. My job is to balance that. And when I perceive something being pushed, I push back. I don't have a choice. And that's what this was. That, that's my perception, that this was a push. And I can't have that. I have residents out there. We all have residents, neighbors in our neighborhoods. We all like trees. A neighbor cuts their tree down, and you're like, ah, I get it. We all get it. But that's not government's role. It's not. Our role is not to legislate what happens in a backyard. Government needs to stay out of my backyard. That's what it comes down to. So I thank you all for your comments. You know, some of you are gonna walk out here and say, you know, bad things about Gallagher, and that's okay. That's all right. There's other people who will say good things, that he stood up for property rights. And I'll take both. It's okay. That's why I'm sitting here. Because I try to do the best I can every single day for this borough. Twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. It doesn't end. Two in the morning, two in the afternoon, six o'clock at night. It's what I do. And I'm okay with that. I love it. I enjoy it. This isn't an attack on the recreation commission. This isn't an attack on individuals. This was an attack on these documents. Because I don't think, and I think there's a whole lot of people out in the borough of Somerville that will say, absolutely not. We can't allow this. To Andrew's point and to Glenn's point, is there a way we can figure out what is best for our community? Yeah, I think we can. Because I think we've had good discuss, Glenn and I have had good discussions on that. The planning board is the body that will determine what is the best and make a recommendation to the Borough Council. And we'll have that in full open view, full discussion. You're welcome to come to those meetings, participate, voice your opinions. That's what we do. Engage, and that's okay. We want you to engage. You may not think we want you to engage, but we want you to engage. So I think we've, we've covered that, uh, long enough. So let's go to next item. All right, ordinance for introduction. Uh, this is ordinance number twenty-seven seventy-one, amending Schedule B of the Land Use Code entitled Lot Bulk and Intensity for Development Standards for the POR Zone, One Family to Reflect That the Maximum Floor Area Ratio Shall Be Thirty Percent. Um, we've had discussions on this, actually, the council had discussions on this, uh, in my absence about a month or so ago. Um, and the recommendation was to move the floor area ratio from twenty-five percent to thirty percent to allow a more, um, acceptable use of, of, uh, space in, uh, in, in town for today's standards. So, um, public comment on twenty-seven seventy-one?
So just for clarification, this, this is regulating what people can do in their homes?
It's allowing them to do more.
Just saying.
Yeah, good. Very good. Hearing no public, I'll close. No comment, I'll close the public. And motion for introduction.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, uh, two forty-nine and two fifty-one, Kevin gave us additional language, there were some typos in there. Uh, nothing substantial has changed, correct, Kevin? It's just a
Uh, that's correct. We, uh, we wanted to recognize that there was a name change for one of the audit organizations. We had to reflect that in the resolution.
Is there any that anybody would like to have pulled off? I think there was some discussion on the synthetic grass.
Two fifty-four, please.
And two fifty-five, please.
Okay.
Two fifty-one.
Okay.
And two fifty-three.
Okay. That doesn't leave many now. All right, uh, two forty-seven is approving Chapter one fifty-nine for the Department of Homeland Security, the federal fiscal year twenty-two of Emergency Management Performance Grant, Emergency Management Agency Assistance. Two forty-eight is approving Chapter one fifty-nine from the National Opioid Settlement Trust. Uh, two forty-nine is supporting the arts and art education through the collaboration of not-for-profit charitable organizations, including Somerville Arts and recognizing arts on division as the borough's creative team. Two fifty is awarding a contract with T N M Associates to collaborate with the environmental commission with preparation of the Community Energy Plan. Two fifty-two is authorizing the Department of Public Works to perform a leaf pickup and disposal program at the Somerville Cemetery. Two fifty-six is memorializing the execution of a certificate of construction completion of the landfill green scene project. Two fifty-seven is authorizing the release of a mortgage lien on one seventy-five South Bridge Street. Two fifty-eight is awarding a contract to Halcon Inc. for Henry P. Vander Veer Memorial Park Pickleball Court Improvements in the amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor, on two forty-nine, the, the name of recognizing would be Somerville Arts, New Jersey.
Yes.
That was the change. Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right, two fifty-one is supporting participation in the Sustainable Jersey Municipal Certification Program.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, pull this out so that we could say thank you to the environmental commission and the folks that do all the hard work to get us certified here through Sustainable Jersey. I think it's extremely important that we participate in this program and that we, um, spend our time, uh, focusing on a more sustainable future for that longer-term vision, whether it includes trees or stormwater, as well as many other things. I think it's worth our effort, and I wanted to commend you guys and say thank you for bringing this forward.
I would second that.
And I would add that, um, this program also brings best practices to our government, and it's very important that we continue to, to support this sustainable New Jersey effort.
Further discussion? Roll call.
There was an emotion.
There was no motion on that. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second?
All right, no further discussion, roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, two fifty-three is authoring, authorizing application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for an inventory and planning grant. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to lift up, uh, Kevin, thank you for your work on this and trying to get, uh, our tree inventory updated. I think we really need an accurate accounting of our tree canopy. So moving forward, I think that would be great, but I did wanna add that if, for some reason this grant fails, we really need to figure out how to fund that in order to, uh, get that because it enables us to apply for a lot more grants and support a lot more of those tree plantings throughout our parks and areas, so.
The community forestry program also gives us a certain amount of insurance, um, for tree hazards. And, um, this is, our, our program is gonna lapse because we do not have this inventory. So it's important that, as Glenn said, whether we get this grant or not, we're gonna have to fund it from our borough.
Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, two fifty-four is approving the installation of antimicrobial synthetic grass to be installed in designated areas with the Special Improvement District. Do we have a motion? Hearing none, we will refer this back to the, uh, DSA to, uh,
Motion?
Oh, did you make?
I thought we were gonna, we were gonna discuss.
Yeah, I, I, I just, because I don't know as much as I would like to about the art of the synthetic
Well, let's get a motion on the table. So you have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
To discuss?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, uh, my concern is about, you know, the permeability of microplastics, and impact on the environment of our downtown area. And where it'll, it'll be located and, and, you know, some of the things that, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Helene.
Helene, mentioned, um, uh, about protecting the trees and things like that. So, and the ecosystem of wherever that turf would be. So that, just
I did some research as well. I, I mean, installing these pads means removing four inches of dirt, adding other soils. Um, then there's maintenance requirements. These things have to be cleaned. Um, I think it's much better to think about other places to put a dog park, much as Ms. Vanezellis said. Uh, do we put some space in a parking lot? Uh, I don't think we want doggy pads on Main Street, again, where people are eating, walking, and, um, passing by. It just showed up on the agenda as well. So, um, I, I definitely think that this needs to go back for
So I, I am, I am very familiar with this project. The, um, if you recall, the, the Dana was here at last meeting, and she did mention this. She did mention that, that the borough is trying to make an effort to become more dog-friendly and be recognized in that area. And included in that would be a, in addition to dog advance, would be the opportunities to provide some infrastructure changes that would, would, would be there. So she, she did mention this. The canine grass, I did meet with the company. She invited me. They were sending samples of that. I am familiar a little with their work. I know they, Hoboken, Jersey City, they, they have this, uh, canine grass. You know, as a dog owner, I'm a little familiar with both artificial grass and grass. I've done both. The, uh, this project was intended to utilize some of the spaces on Main Street. There was a discussion about extending some of the tree areas. That's been an abandoned discussion. They've moved on from that, and we're looking at areas in which there's open spaces, that would lend itself to, uh, walking a dog and, and the dog allowing, um, to relieve itself. And it'd be accompanied with, uh, bags and, and a waste station. That's a discussion, but the reason it's on the agenda is because this, the event that's happening in April is not an event that can get planned overnight. So this was an opportunity to, to, uh, to basically explain this is one of the activities that, that, um, that would be planned for that infrastructure change. There was, um, you know, there's an opportunity, I don't know, think there, there's going to be an opportunity to do it with regular grass. And since there's a company out there that actually, uh, has this and utilizes, this was kind of the discussion of the DSA. If the council desires not to take an action at this time, I, I would just suggest you just don't abandon the idea that, well, I'm able to come back, provide, uh, with, with our liaison, uh, Councilman Pitts, the, uh, the details of it. You know, uh, again, I think the information would be important, you know, to make a, a, a more, a better decision. It is flush to the ground, so I do, I know there was questions about that. So there are opportunities in the downtown area that would lend itself to that. I know Dana gave a presentation of about how seventy percent of folks, um, own dogs and, and it'd be somewhat of an economic advancement to the businesses downtown. So, so based on that information.
Has there been any proposal for rules and regulations? Because that's another thing my research showed, that if you're gonna make a puppy-friendly community, you also need to have rules and regulations to make sure that there's respect for how this goes on.
Councilwoman, that's, uh, well taken. This is completely an embryonic point now. So we're, we're trying to figure out if, if this is, um, is this something we can actually do here? And, and, and they were looking for the council's endorsement to kind of move it forward. Um, if it requires a delay, that's fine. Uh, policies and procedures and uses, all that stuff will come later. The, the resolution does read to the fact that exactly what I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's kind of an embryonic stage here. It'll have to work its way through infrastructure design committees and, and review and budgeting as well. Um, but this is really an endorsement to say, kind of, DSA to move on. But if you're not ready there yet, that's understandable. We could bring this back to you, um, in two weeks after we've done our testing and reviewed some of the materials that's available to us.
What if we, uh, I, I asked for an amendment to the motion that says approving the review of antimicrobial synthetic grass so that they, it gives the, uh, DSA the ability to move forward with the review, understanding all those parameters behind it and
I don't think we want it on Main Street. That's my opinion.
But that's up to the council.
Can I make a motion to table?
Second. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't want the council being in a position that they're uncomfortable. I want you to understand what, what the intent is. So, um,
All right, so there's a motion to table.
Second.
All right, uh, Jeremy, how do I, do I have to take the other motion down?
No, it's just a vote on the motion to table.
Okay, all right, so, uh, roll call to table.
Um, we have a motion, we have a second, correct? Okay. Correct, thank you. Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, uh, number two fifty-five is approving Somerville Puppy Palooza Event on April twenty-sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-six.
Are the two together?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to discuss, motion to approve? What do you?
It's a motion to approve.
Uh, a motion, sorry.
All right, motion on table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I would love to see details on what we would be approving.
Okay. Again, it's, it's, it's early in the stage, but again, it's a planning process that takes a long time.
Yeah, but how do you ask us to approve something?
Quite often that you receive resolutions in front of you without details regarding events that you're approving. So in that vein, that's the reason it's on. If, if this one's going to be treated a little differently than others that have been approved, that's perfectly fine. Uh, we'll, we'll be happy to, uh, again, this is just an endorsement of a program to take place on, on April twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and I think, I think the DSA would come in, uh, be prior to that to fill the council in on, you know, how, how it's going to operate, what the cleanup process is, all of those different elements behind it. And it's bringing it
It'll, it'll, trust me, it'll involve taking pictures of your, of your dog, photo, photo areas. It'll include, uh, maybe dog training, kind of, uh, things that would bring people to the downtown with, with their dogs on a particular day.
Yeah.
Having, I know a Sparky from the Patriots will attend, that sort of thing. And again, this is just an endorsement of utilizing that day, locking in an event for a particular day in April.
Because you have to start planning.
Are we closing up the streets?
Well, you, you would have to approve the closing of the street when that comes in front of you.
I think it's, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, between Grove and, and Bridge. That's, that, at least that was the initial
That, that's the initial discussion. Again, a lot of these things are a little, um, they're new, first of all. Because I, I listen, you have plenty of things that go in front of you that aren't new, and they're just repetitive. This is new, that's why it's important to lock down dates and times and, and things like that because they're, you know, we wanna make sure that those dates do not conflict with something else that may eventually get approved or, or considered. So that, this is all, it's just locking down a date. Um, trust me, I'm confident that the director of the DSA will be here many times promoting the event and, and the activities associated with this particular event.
It's a great thing. Good. All right, uh, roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
No.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, uh, bills and vouchers, Roger.
All righty. I make a motion to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty cents.
I second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, uh, let's see. Teresa, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.